Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We are here today with our Administrative Services Annual Report from 2022. It's always weird to me that we talk about the following year or the previous year in the current year while we're actually already working on the budget for the following year. But that's exactly what we're here today is to give you that review of what 2022 looked like in our Administrative Services Annual Report for this year. Just as a quick reminder, can we get the screen up there so I make sure I'm always on the same page as everybody? Perfect, thank you Courtney. Administrative Services includes our Finance Division, our Facilities Division, and our IT Division, our central services. We always consider the fact that Administrative Services, our customers, are all of you, all of our other departments, all of our internal customers, our agency is our other coworkers, if you will, within our organization. So when we're talking about the people that we serve, well, of course, we all serve the public, we're also serving all of our internal folks as well. You can see from our org chart that we have on the screen here, the different areas that we are covering and the staffing complements that are included in those divisions to do so, to accomplish that work. This is the same level of staffing that we will have in 2023 with one change. In 23, we did add one additional position in our IT department as a BI analyst. It actually ends up being a BI analyst in training. We went out for the market when we were trying to hire the BI analyst and found that the market is really tight for that type of role at this point in time. And what we were able to do was kind of refine that a little bit and come back with a lower grade position, and we were successful in that regard. So we are a small team, but I like to say we're a mighty team. We get a lot of stuff done, and our guys are going to be here this morning to tell you a little bit about some of the different things that have occurred over the past year in 2022. So I'm going to start and ask Jason to give us his review of the IT department. And keep in mind, Jason started in his role as the IT Director in April 16th.
April 16th. So it's not even been a year yet.
Not even a whole year yet.
Exactly.
That was over by about May 16th, I think that was the case.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's, yeah, it's hard to believe it's already been a year since I've taken over this role. I've been working on this report for many years, and it's actually a really fun report to work on because I sit down with the team and ask them, what are the things you are really proud of? What are things that you want to showcase to the Commissioners, to the public? And so this is, this report for IT is, is the bread and butter of what the IT Department is really proud of. So the first slide we have is on IT support. You see, we manage a lot of devices. When I tell new employees or interview candidates, I tell them that it's not just one company we're working for. We're covering like eight different agencies. So anywhere from WIC to Highway to Land Services, they all have their needs. It's not like working for a bank where you have one set of software, one set of hardware for the whole entire organization. Here, we have squad cars, we have bomb robots, we have drones, we have jail equipment. So it's a wide variety of technology we're working with in the IT Department, which is pretty impressive. If you look at the work orders, we were actually down 1,000 work orders last year. That's the first time since 2014 that we actually had a decrease in work orders. The reason being is we implemented a new system called Fish ER, if you go to the next slide. That actually is an automated system where before, when somebody had a question on an email if it was legitimate or not, we had to manually inspect it in IT. We had to look at the links, we had to look at the senders to make sure it was actually accurate or a legitimate email. We subscribe to a system that when a user receives an email, if they question it, they can hit a button on their Outlook, and that automatically goes to this, this program that will analyze the email and find out if it's a legitimate email or not. So over the course of the year, we're finding we have about 1,000 emails that are questioned by our users each year. And so what's really nice is that's 1,000 less emails that IT has to look at and could possibly miss where, when you're using an automated system that's, you know, got AI-based into it, it's going to catch more, more issues in those emails. So that's why our ticket count is down for the first time.
And one of the things that, you know, you're all, everybody gets those test emails from time to time, and we know nobody's failing them anymore. And actually, Jason's going to have a slide about that in a little while that talks about it. But getting that in tune with folks is what now caused 1,000 less tickets to come to the team to have to deal with individually because they're putting that mindset forward. And just by simply clicking that little button on their Outlook toolbar that says that is this a phishing email, it reduces the amount of work that the team has to do. So it is paying dividends, even though everybody's like, why do you send these? This is part of why we do it.
Yep. Well, on those ones, those you will not get a survey on. So if you're getting an email completed with a user's name on it, that is something that somebody in our department has physically looked at. So the automated ones, you'll get an email back saying, hey, this is safe, or no, it just deletes it automatically. So, yeah. The, there's not the Outlook plugin for the iPads yet, but you can still forward it to the... Right, correct, yep. Yeah, you're welcome. Commissioner Lovekey caught a little flaw in the system, and so it caused us to ref- tune and refine how the system worked, which was kind of interesting. So good job. First, I think it was his first day on staff that we caught that, so, yeah. This is our IT work order SLA. And so basically, every email that, or every ticket that comes in gets assigned a priority. And depending on the severity of the ticket depends on the severity that gets, gets assigned. If you look and you can see that we only had 1.42% of all of our tickets that were not inside that SLA. I find that very impressive. Our teams are really... SLA is a service level agreement. What that means is basically, we, each ticket gets assigned a priority level, like P1 is a critical, system's down. And then what we do from there is then we tell the county what the expected response time is going to be. So it's either going to be like on a critical, it's an immediate response where that's all hands on deck, everybody drops what they're doing, all the way down to a low P4, which that could be up to 90 days. That's either we got a ticket in with a vendor, or we're waiting for supplies to show up from Dell or HP or whoever we order our equipment from. So it all depends on, you know, the impact. Yep, promise to the customer and the impact. Right. That is correct, yes. Correct. Correct. And then out on SharePoint, you know, it does have the breakdown of everything as far as, you know, if it affects multiple users, one person, if it affects, you know, organizational impact. So that's how we determine what ticket, what the priority is for each ticket that comes in.
And so I think it makes them much more efficient and transparent, and their customers understand what's going on.
Right. And we try to get to every ticket as soon as we possibly can, but there are, there are some that we can't control that, you know, laptop docs are backordered by six months. They, we just can't, we can't control that. So that's why that gets a lower priority than what, you know, if all of a sudden your PC is completely down and you can't work. That's, that's a, you know, it's not even apples to apples, so.
I like how you prioritize them though, based on their seriousness and the impact it'll have.
Correct, yep.
And one of the things too, the, the IT SharePoint page, like Jason said, this is right out there, so any employee can go out and see, what is the SLA? When, if I have this type of issue, when can I expect that this is going to be done? There's a lot of information that is actually on that SharePoint page that folks might not know. It's not just how do I submit a ticket? It's inclusive of the SLA agreement so that they know exactly how long that's going to take. It does provide what the standards are for specifics for some of our different equipment of what we're using in some of those different areas. So it's a great resource if any of our internal staff need to take a look and see what they can expect from the team, it's all listed right there.
Email monitoring, this is kind of an interesting slide that I always enjoy looking at every year. We receive at Crow Wing County 2.9 million emails every year. Then it breaks it down by what's clean, what are viruses, what is phishing, what is spam. Viruses has really gone down over the last couple of years. Attackers have realized sending viruses by email is not, not productive for them as much as phishing is. As far as viruses go, they have other ways of trying to get into the systems versus email. The amount of spam that is dropped before it even hits people's inboxes, to me, is an amazing number. It's the 21% of emails dropped before it even reaches the end users.
So you think you're getting a lot of spam in your email box? 21% of that is not even getting to your email box before you see it. That's, that's on top of what you're already seeing for the amount of spam that you're getting.
Trust us when we tell you, you don't want to see those emails.
No, no. You absolutely do not.
Now here's the know before. Here is what we implemented back in 2020. This is a system where we test employees on their ability to identify bad or corrupt messages. Over 73% of county breaches, or not county breaches, but of company breaches are by the end user. So we need to get diligent on educating our users on what is a legitimate message, what is a clean message. So as you can see, in 2020, we had a 4.7% click rate where the users, 4.7% of the users would click on email messages that they did not know. It went down to 3.4 in '21 and 3.2 in '22. Industry standard right now is 3.9%. Our users are doing a good job, but we are still having a lot of users click. One other thing that we implemented in '21, or in '22 was after so many times of failing, they automatically get enrolled into phishing training to help on what is legitimate email, what is a bad email. A lot of these emails, what they're asking for is username, passwords, or redirecting to malicious sites that will harvest your information. And so we just need to be really diligent on trying to educate our users on what is a legitimate email and trying to keep each other safe.
You'll probably notice that some of those phishing test emails are becoming more and more legit looking. They look like they're coming from HR, they look like they're coming from payroll. They specifically state HR at Crow Wing County, whatever it might be from that perspective. Part of the reason why for that, and that is a complaint that we have heard from some folks, is it's, it's, looks too, it looks too real, it looks too real. That's the whole point of testing this because they are getting more sophisticated. Like Jason said, they're finding out that it is more advantageous for them to try to do a phishing campaign versus just sending a virus. People aren't as likely to open an attachment that's going to have a virus anymore. But if they see an email that's coming from HR that says, update your payroll, they're more likely to click on that. So this is why you're seeing a lot of these test emails, these phishing tests, that are looking more legit and why we really want people to put that critical lens to it. You're never going to hurt anything by forwarding an email saying, is this a phishing scam? And it can come back and say, nope, this is good, you can go ahead and open it. You're more likely to have issues if you just randomly click on everything that you see in an email. If an email has a link, there are multiple ways that you should verify that before you click on it.
The nice thing about that new system that we have with the Fish ER that also monitors the emails is we can look at who all received that message. And so we can see, did that go up to 30 people? We can see if the users opened that message. We can then also go in there and remove that message from everybody's inbox and say if five people clicked on the link or clicked on the email, we can notify those users, what did you see, what did you click on? And be proactive on trying to find out what they did versus having them call us and say, hey, I think I clicked on a link that, that was not accurate or not legitimate, so.
And one of the things that I also want to make sure everybody is aware of, if you do click on something and you're like, oh, shoot, I shouldn't have done that, it's, you're not going to get in trouble for clicking on it.
Absolutely not.
Report it right away, contact Jason and his team to let them know, you know what? Oops, I clicked on this, I shouldn't have done it. They can attack and deal with it at that point in time versus the, ooh, I shouldn't have done that, I don't want to say anything because I'm going to get in trouble about it, that's going to have a chance of having more impact.
Yep, the sooner we know, the better. And we, we have users always say, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. We're like, we're just glad you reported it. That's, as long as we know, we can be proactive and look at all of our systems. That's one of those urgent, critical things where we get all hands on deck. We'll have our network team looking at network shares, files, firewall. We'll have our help desk team scanning PCs, looking at, at the computer to make sure nothing was compromised or infected or anything like that. So the, the sooner we know, the quicker we can, can reduce the amount of damage that could be done, so. GIS, so GIS was a really busy year for, it's a one-man department in the IT Department right now. Last year, he had the redistricting, which was huge. And I know all of you've dealt with the GIS redistricting last year, or at least three of you guys. So he had to redo all the mapping. The other huge improvement in GIS last year is we went from a six-inch aerial down to a two-inch aerial. That was in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department and Land Services to be able to, one of the big things is the biking trails on Kuna. It was hard to see a six-inch parcel area where with a two-inch, they can see a lot more detail to get first responders out to the biking trails, to find out where the access points are, where, you know, they can do rescues from. So it was a really cool partnership between Land Services and the Sheriff's Department to, to update that GIS to get it that way. The other big thing that we saw last year is the snowplow map. Where's my snowplow? You can find it off the Highway's website page. We had a 47% increase in views to where's my snowplow. That's 6,000, you know, 600 visits last winter on where their snowplows at. We have people all the time say, it's so fun to see the route of where the plows are going and what they're doing, you know, are they going to turn at this intersection or not? A big dream of myself and Debbie's is we'd love to get to the point where we can say, Alexa, when's the snowplow coming by my house? Or Echo, where, when's the snowplow coming by my house? I've been working with the highway supervisor out there, and the routes are never the same, so it might be a challenge to figure out how we are going to do that. But I would, I'd ultimately love to see that at some point where we can interact that and have it fun where that way, you know, I don't want to go with a snowblower then in my driveway, with a snowblower in my driveway till after the plow comes by versus snowblowing then having the plow come by, which it seems like that's Murphy's Law, so.
It seems like silly little things, but as the person responsible for snow removal at my house, I think that way. I want to do it after the snowplow goes by because otherwise I got to do it twice.
Right, yep. And there's nothing worse than actually putting the snowblower away and then walking inside and the plow goes by. So, you know, so, yeah, if you could time that a little bit better. So that, that is a future dream of ours to get to that point, so.
I'm surprised at the number of visits already.
Right.
It's only two years old.
Two years old. It's really, really been, been heavily used. The other thing that we have going on in GIS is we have a GIS hub where realtors, businesses can go out there and download parcel information. We had a 31% increase of parcel downloads in '21. I'm attributing that to probably all the real estate that was up for sale or being listed, being bought, sold in the county last year. CRM is a newer product that stands for Customer Relationship Management. We've only been using CRM for about the last three years. And so far, it's been really cool to see what we've done with CRM. We've already got two ticketing systems up and running. We have the IT ticketing system and the Highway ticketing system. The really neat thing about CRM is it's a relation, relationship data, or it's fluid data. So we can build it and then tie it together. So for example, if somebody puts a ticket in, we can integrate our inventory into that CRM. So that way, you know, Mr. Hools put a ticket in five times of a certain issue, we can look and be like, oh, his PC is five years old, we should maybe look at, you know, updating that or replacing that. And so it brings all that data together, so it's real time. We can take and manipulate that data to, you know, show whatever we want it to show as long as that data's in those databases. We, the other big thing in '22 that we implemented was the Land Services permitting application. We used a previous vendor before that, it was a smaller company, they weren't able to do a lot of the customizations that we were looking for. So we sat down with Land Services in the discovery phase and built this with the CRM, with the people we have on staff and a vendor we used to get exactly what they wanted.
One of the things with this permitting system, we knew this was going to be the most complex and complicated system that we were going to be implementing with this CRM product. You might hear us talk about Dynamics, you might hear us talk about Microsoft Dynamics. It is the product of this customer relation management system, the CRM system. And so when we started off with this process, we picked the most difficult one first, knowing it was going to take the most time, knowing it was going to have the most hooks. When you think about all the things when you're applying for a permit, it has to integrate with our real estate system because we need to know which parcel is being integrated with. It needs to integrate with our payment system because they need to pay for their permit when they're pulling that permit as well. So we knew that there were going to be several different connections of what needed to happen here. And while this particular process took significantly longer than what we originally had hoped for, I think in the end, what it does show us is a good learning curve for our internal staff as they're now implementing more projects. Jason talked about the ticketing systems, the integrated highway permitting development stuff. The highway permitting is going to take a lot less time because of the time that we put in with the Land Services permits first. So it took a little bit longer, but...
Yeah, and as far as the highway, we started that, that project in November, and they're hoping to have an April 1st go-live date. So that was significantly a lot less time than what the, the Land Services was, but we had a lot of that foundation built. So we're really excited on how fast that project is moving.
And the Land Services permitting is now a much better product for our customers and for our internal staff as well. They are able to get dashboards, reports, tracking of permits better. It's a better system and it's a better product all the way around. So even though it took a little longer, better outcomes of that project.
Was that a separate software company that built that, like a turnkey software company? And you integrated it, or did you build it in-house?
We built that all in-house from the ground up using Microsoft Dynamics.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
The software provides a framework.
Right, and they, they had to fill in the blanks.
It's configurable, I believe is the term they use. And so you can configure the software to the needs that you have. So it is a generic framework that you can build applications within. And so we are doing that more in-house than we had traditionally done. And it's because, I think, some of our needs are more advanced. That's why we left the service co-ops we were with...
Right.
To do these kinds of things because it was the lowest common denominator. Whatever the furthest behind county wanted is generally all you could muster. And that's not where we're at. And so these have, this is the path we have chosen to develop these kinds of systems. And so it's a framework that you're going to see again and again and again. It's a pretty important investment for us.
With CRM, we've been able to create several different surveys. So like Community Services has like 18 different surveys that they send out, Land Services has one, IT, we have one, that's that survey when, when you close a ticket, a survey is automatically generated. And then that survey goes out, we fill it out, and then on the next slide, it goes back to the dashboarding. So I, me as a manager, I can go in there and look at, are my employees meeting the requirements of how many surveys they're supposed to get per year? What's their customer satisfaction? You know, most of the times, our surveys are very, very high scoring surveys as far as 4.9, 4.8%. If there's one that's lower, I can look back at the tickets and be like, okay, what's going on with this? Is it something, was it a delay in equipment where somebody's not happy that they had to wait six months for a laptop and they marked a lower survey? So it gives me a lot of flexibility as a manager to see what is going on in the department and what's going on with work orders and tickets that come in. So the dashboards are really, really nice and they automatically flow in, into the CRM once they're built.
It also ensures that a survey goes to people regardless of whether they were pleased.
Correct.
Right, yep. And it's completely anonymous too. And so I know there's some, some feedback and discussion on should they be anonymous or not, but I feel like you get a true sample by being anonymous on, on those surveys.
So if anybody was worried that the only people that got a survey was the people that the employee already knew were satisfied, this is intentionally overcoming that hurdle.
And even with that, the IT Department's satisfaction rating in 2022 was 99.96% satisfaction rating. 99.96% for internal customers and the number of tickets that they go through every year. That is a huge...
500 people, 99.96% satisfied about anything.
Yes, about anything.
About anything.
Anything is noteworthy. Service level, oh my goodness.
Yep, I'm really proud of the...
A lot.
Yeah, I'm really proud of the staff we have. They work hard, they, they see customer service as a number one priority, and they know it's for a bigger picture. It's not just serving the community service, community services worker, it's serving the public as well. So everything we do affects them, so. Yeah, BI application support, and BI is for business intelligence. So we have all this data, we have tons and tons of data, but what goods the data if we can't make a picture that people can understand? So what, we have, we have a gentleman on staff, we've just added another one, where they take all this data and put it into pictures that we can understand and read and into reports we can read. Each month, they can create custom reports. Basically, all this data is stored in different databases. And when I talk to Earl and other people that do BI stuff, they're talking, when they're looking at, at the data harvesting this, they're talking millions of lines of code. Like Earl will be like, oh, I found an error online, 3 million, whatever. It's like, so they're sifting through all this data to be able to gather and make reports that we can understand that help better make our decisions here at the county.
I'll give you an example that we're working on right now. Trying to get access to a data set on family home daycare licensing. Who's responsible for putting the data in? County government. And yet, we have to jump through hoops at the state of Minnesota to get access to the data that we put in, in an electronic format. So we inputted it keystroke by keystroke by keystroke. They are reluctant to let us have the data back in an electronic format that we can sort and screen. And here's the question.
Why?
How many daycares do we have in our community today versus two years ago? Of those, do we have any issues with infants, toddlers, school-aged children? All of the data's in that data set. And mining it out to answer a legitimate business question, it's good for nothing sitting in St. Paul.
Right.
It's useful to us out here to make better, more informed decisions. And so that's why access to this data is important. We're the ones putting it in, we're the ones administering the program, we're the ones who are trying to improve. But yet, there are hurdles, obstacles placed in our path. We're having to get permission right now.
Correct, yep. And like this daycare one was great. It was, Earl had access to the data warehouse and was able to harvest that information and he'll, he's going to build a report for you, where three years ago, we would not have been able to touch that data.
Well, actually, this is a portion of the data warehouse he doesn't have access to.
Oh, he doesn't have access to it, okay.
So he can see the data set, he can't access it.
Okay.
So we're going through the permissions process. I'm hoping it's a little easier than the last time. We spent five years the last time getting access to the data we have access to now.
We want to make data-driven decisions as an organization. How do you make data-driven decisions if you don't have access to the data? And once we get the data, how do we know how to filter it, sort it? You and I talked this morning, Commissioner Lovekey, about needing to have the facts. Well, part of the facts is being able to use the data that we have. That's what our BI department is doing. They are, and if you see on the screen, it's showing the number of different departments that they... They are, and if you see on the screen, it's showing the number of different departments that they are working through. You can see that it's everything from community services to human resources to the attorney's office to highway, land services. There's not a single department that's not being touched by the efforts of our BI analyst department. So it is important that we are able to get that information, to provide it to our customers, being those internal people, to make those right decisions that need to be made.
Onto the website. So the website, it's kind of funny to always look at the views. The in custody is the number one viewed page on their website. That's been that way for many, many years. People want to see who's in custody. You know, when looking at the visitors, in 2022, we had, you know, just over a million visitors to the Crow Wing County website. When you look at the visitor map, we found it very interesting that 212,000 visitors came out of Missouri. So we tracked that down a little bit. And what we found was there's a logo that, it's our signature logo, must have been tied to a report somewhere that we've sent out to the public. And so the, so the company that used the report must be out of Missouri and they use one of our logos for that report. So that's why that tracked so many different visitors. But it's always interesting to see, how are people, how are people finding us? And if we go to the next slide, oops.
Now, let me revisit that a little bit. They, we published a report on something, let's say, lake water quality. And a company picked that up and.
Or the company that, that developed that, helped us with that report, used one of our graphics or our logos in that report. And when it was sent out, it just ties back. It's just a link that ties back. So, but it's, it's the, the Crow Wing County logo is what is driving all those hits out of Missouri. So it's kind of, it was very fascinating.
They're using it as a marketing tool for the company that helped develop a brochure or whatever it might be. And they're saying, here's what, here's one of the same things that we've done.
Yep.
Yep, and people click on it. Yep.
Someone's very effective at marketing.
Yeah, yep. So. It's still interesting to see as far as 70% of people still visit our website with a desktop computer. I was really anticipating that to be the opposite. I was anticipating to see like, you know, 70% on mobile device. But we still have probably a lot of businesses in town and in our community that access the website at the office. So that's probably why we're still seeing the desktop usage so high.
Is that reversed? I thought it used to be that mobile devices were outpacing desktops.
Um, not, not lately. I don't believe.
It had gotten closer. It was closer to that 50/50 slit. But now it's, it's trended back. It's never been, I don't think it's ever been that the mobile was higher.
Right.
But it had always been trending closer. Yep.
So.
Interesting.
And then when you look at, 63% of the people go directly to crowing.us. That means, you know, that address is embedded in their head. They know that address. Versus, you know, 2.85% is coming from Google, so.
One thing you will start seeing is you're going to see more things that are going to be branded as crowing.gov.
Correct.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Jason?
Yep, um, the federal government has required us to go, to get a .gov domain name. So we're in the, the early phases of transitioning everything over to crowing.gov. So that means a lot of changes, you know, business cards, letterheads, all that stuff will need to be replaced at some, at some point. The nice thing is crowing.us is still going to work indefinitely. So we don't need to throw away anything. We don't need to replace anything. It's as things get used up, we'll get the new domain name on that. Right now, currently, our website is 100% at crowing.gov. But you can go to crowing.us and it, it just automatically redirects. It's called, what's called an alias. Just directs it across there.
So right now, if anyone types in crowing.us, if you type that into your search bar, it's going to bring you up to our website and you'll notice in the search bar, it changes to crowing.gov. If you go to crowing.gov, it automatically takes you to that crowing.gov. The whole intention with the .gov extension is to let end-users know this is a trusted source. This is a trusted government source. You had to register this domain with the federal government to be able to receive that, that .gov designation to start with. There is a push to let end-users know, where can I find real, true, factual information? Well, if it's got the .gov extension, this is that website for that government agency. If you think about, we chose crowing.us because it was short. It was short and easy. Before, we were crow-wing.mn.us. Oh, no, we were C-O dot crow-wing.mn.us. Who wants to put all of that into anything? You know, when you try to tell somebody what your website is or what your email address is, that was difficult. So we shortened to crowing.us. That was simple as registering a domain name. It didn't have to go through any verification, any proof of any kind. Anybody could say they were crowingcounty.us. That's not really us. But anybody could take that designation if they wanted to. So by having this crowing.gov, we know that this is that true government website for Crow Wing County that we are putting out there. So you'll start to see some things happening over the next year. As Jason said, it's going to be pretty organic as we transition through this. You'll start seeing some things that say crowing.gov. But there are a lot of things that we have to identify to make sure that we get them all changed holistically.
Yeah, back, what, how many, was it 10, 15 years ago when we were this, the long domain name? It was pretty easy to transition. It was just a website and email address.
Yeah.
Well, now we have so many things that are cloud-based. We have so many things that are tied to your email address. So it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Squad cars, plow trucks, all the things.
So it's just not as easy as just saying, hey, everybody, we're just crowing.gov now. There, there's a lot. I've actually developed a committee where we sit down and we discuss, okay, what's the impact on this system? What's the impact on, you know, what's it going to be on elections? What's it going to be on finance? So that way, we make sure we're, you know, crossing, D and I is crossing our Ts to make sure we don't have a major failure somewhere within that conversion. Social media, Facebook still has the top post of 2022 was the county snowplows. We'll be back over in the morning. As, as we move forward, Facebook, less and less people are using Facebook. The, or the younger generations are using Facebook. So we need to be proactive and figure out what are the platforms we really need to capitalize on? How do we reach these younger generations on where you're polling places? Where, you know, where do you go pay your taxes? So it's just trying to find out, you know, is it Instagram? Is it Snapchat? We're going to stay away from TikTok, but.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So, but yeah, Facebook is, is a really good tool we use. It's amazing what the highway department gets out of there when the snowplows hit the road. How many views and comments they get. Nice to see that. Twitter, Twitter's something, you know, we've got 1,001 or 54 followers. That seems to be down a little bit from, or not as many people use Twitter as they are Facebook. Twitter's been kind of going through some changes and growing pains, you know, organizationally. And I think people are just kind of backing away from Twitter a little bit. We had a board meeting on 10, or October 11th that had 4,000 views. That was a short-term rental board meeting. So there was a lot of people tuned in, watching that. That was a really important board meeting for them.
Look at the difference. So 4,055 views of that meeting, the next highest was only 1,729. So you can see what's generating the interest there as well.
Yep. And I threw this slide in here as a fun fact. I was gathering some information for Debbie a couple of months ago. And one of the things that I thought was really weird or really strange, I had to triple-check the numbers on printing. That we print 7,800 pages per day here at the county. That equates to 325 per hour or 2.8 million pages per year. So.
And we say we're paperless in a lot of our systems. We are paperless in a lot of our systems, but yet we're still printing 2.8 million pages per year.
Yeah, so.
We're coming for your printers. No.
Yep, exactly. Yep, we're coming for your printers. Yep, so. Yeah, I, I looked at the number. I'm like, that can't be. But it is. It's, I triple-checked it, so. On an average, 50 million files are backed up every week. So as we make changes, we get emails, we send emails, all those files get backed up. But so 50 million files get backed up per week. On an average, we have 5,000, 5,000 phone calls conducted each day here at the county. That's pretty impressive, over 500 people. Then another very interesting stat that we found is Microsoft Teams. That wasn't even in existence in the county back, literally three years ago, almost to the day. And now Teams has changed the way we do business. Right now, you know, there's, in the last 180 days, there's been 491,000 Teams chats. There's been 14,000 Team meetings conducted and 10,000 of Teams calls in the last 180 days. So to see that Teams, we weren't using Teams at all in March of 2020 to what we're using it now. I have a lot of workers that work hybrid or remote. Every time I walk by their desk, you can see that they're in a meeting with somebody that's hybrid or remote. It's a great way of sharing your screen and collaborating the data to be, be more efficient with, with these home workers or the hybrid, hybrid workers.
And this is part of the reason why we did put the efforts into technology and updating our technology as well as some of our meeting rooms and areas so that we can utilize that technology to the fullest extent. That's a productivity tool that has really enhanced all of our divisions across the entire organization.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I never thought, you know, three years ago, I'd be in several Teams meetings per day. It's, it's crazy, so. That, that conducts my portion of the thing. Do you guys have any questions?
One quick question by mine. Your phone calls.
Yeah.
Are those the desk phones only that you're measuring?
It's.
You've got all the cell phones out there.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Do you want to make sure your mic is on so Paul can hear?
My question, Paul, was on the phone calls. Are, is the number that he's putting out here, the 5,000, just the desk phones? Or is it all the, the cell phones that we have out there? You know, I run my own personal cellphone. But your squads all have.
Yep, that does not, that does not count.
Doesn't count those.
That's only your physical desk phone and what we call soft phones where there's a phone on the computer, so.
Okay.
But yeah, that's only the physical county, county numbers, so.
In terms of business, it's a lot larger than even that.
Oh, much larger, yes. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Other questions for Jason?
Just one, Jason, that, that no, what is it? Known before or whatever that, know before?
Know before.
Know before, yep.
The cost of that software, is that extremely expensive or not?
No, it's, it's like $7,000 a year. And that includes our training for the end-users. That includes also that Phish ER, which takes and monitors all of the messages and, and looks at those. The addition, you know, we were paying about 4,000 or 5,000 for the, the training. It was only an additional like 2,000 to add in all that analytics for all those messages. So I felt it was a really, really good value.
Is there, when you see all this stuff coming in, whether it be phishing or spam or whatever, and you get that information here, you know where that came from then, correct? Because it comes into our system.
Yep.
And we've stopped it from coming down to us as end-users.
Correct.
But can you do anything then with that and, and like block it, send it back, report it?
Yep, and that's exactly what we do. And I'm also part of a director's group throughout all the counties in Minnesota. And so what we'll do is if we see that there's a bad email address out there, we go in there and blacklist that email address. So that way, it does not even hit our system. So that way, it just automatically gets dropped.
Other counties too.
Other, well, other counties will alert each other. I'll say, hey, we got an email from XYZ company. They might do business with you. Because we all know who we do business with. And so it's really helpful to know that such and such person got infected. Don't open any emails from them. So we'll go in there and block those email addresses right away until, till we know that it's been corrected. And then we can remove that block to allow those emails back in. So.
Good. So it's kind of a preventive also.
Preventive, yes. Yes, very much so.
Because I don't think we want to fix a ransomware problem.
No, we do not want to fix a ransomware issue, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for keeping us safe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the electronic world.
Yes, it's, it's a 24-hour job. It's, it's, uh, there's a lot of nights I get emails at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night saying, hey, this is something suspicious going on. Let's, and we get everybody involved and get on it to make sure we're keeping everybody safe, so.
Jason and his team are doing a great job and they are really always all hands on deck, always available for whatever issues come up. You know, we have 24/7 operations around here, whether it's our law enforcement, whether it's our highway department, whatever it might be. They're making sure that all of our data is safe and available. One other stat I should note from 2022 as well was that the, I gotta find my network availability.
Oh, that's.
Was, we have a goal of 95% network availability and our network availability in 2022 was 100%. We did not lose a single minute of productivity due to not having our network available. Part of that is because of some of the security segmentation projects that they've been working on to make sure that if one area goes down, we have a redundancy. We have an ability to keep it going on something else. But we did not lose a single minute of productivity in the organization in 2022 due to the network not being available.
What's the hourly rate associated with one hour of network downtime?
Times 500 employees, yep.
Very, very expensive. And that's why this is important. And that's why percent of time without power.
Exactly.
Idling 500 people is very expensive. And so this is a high, high priority in IT and in facilities. They got to keep us running.
And just to note, the number, the percentage of time without power was zero in 2022 as well. We did not lose any productivity time due to not having power into our organization either.
For somebody who's new in this, in this world here, it's, it's pretty refreshing to walk into a place and be pretty inept as far as my ability, and I'm sure you would agree with that, Jason, when I walked in.
We would never say that out loud.
You wouldn't want to say that out loud in a, in a public meeting, but, but I really appreciate the fact that, that I didn't. When I sat in there, they were able to speak at my level, help me get up to this level. I know I'll be coming to visit more because I've, I've just got to learn more. And I appreciate you guys being there. It really, really means a lot to somebody new, walking into newer organization and feeling welcome to say, I got a problem. Well, that's why we're here.
Yep, I, I really pride my staff on that, that ability to be able to relate at all levels. Because IT, a lot of times, we think over here a lot of times and talk over here a lot of times. Exactly. And so our, our group is really good at being able to break it down to the people's ability to make them feel comfortable and, and work side by side with them, so.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, thank you, guys.
Good job.
And anytime you guys want to come down and visit and see the behind the scenes, you're welcome to come down as well.
I'll be down there again, I'm sure.
All right, sounds, sounds good.
John is going to give us an update on our facilities team and all the work that they've been doing over the last year.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, John.
Madam Chair Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to tell a little bit of our story. Guilty, I'm guilty, paper.
I noticed everybody, I think, had paper.
I'm a hybrid worker. I have both, so. Some of this is a little bit redundant and we just freshen up the numbers every year. We, we do some redundant tasks and we provide some redundant services as part of what we do. Just as a quick update, 15 buildings we're taking care of right now, 12 for Crow Wing County, four for the city of Brainerd. Pardon me? Oh, did you look at that?
You know what? We didn't update the 15 to 16 after you updated the four for City of Brainerd for the library.
So we took on, what we did was we took on the City of Brainerd library. We added that.
That's not on the finance slide. We'll just leave that. No.
So I, yeah, apologize for that.
Good catch.
For over 490,000 square feet of office and workspace, associated grounds work of over 700,000 square feet. That's our parking lots, sidewalks, all of our turf. 390 horsepower of boilers for heating, central plant operation, 980 tons of chiller and DX for air conditioning. Those are big numbers. 8.5 million gallons of water delivered to our buildings every 24 hours, which is not actually water, it's actually ethylene glycol. And we operate a 1.5 million watt generator for backup power along with UPSs and switch gears. So that's a, that's the heart of our infrastructure. That's the meat of it. The central plant, heating and cooling, the generators, the UPS, that whole part of the transfer switches. Just switching to, we talked about emergency power and network downtime. Just what happens in the sequence when the power goes out around here, if you're ever behind the scenes and get to witness it, it's pretty impressive. The first thing that happens in the first second is our UPS is engaged to keep everybody's computers online. Within 13 seconds of the power going out, the generator's coming on. And the generator can get turned on from any facility through a transfer switch. So if the power goes out in this building, but it's not out down the street, the transfer switch in this facility will automatically turn the generator on. And then if other facilities start dropping out, they'll be able to piggyback on the generator. start dropping out, they'll be able to piggyback on the generator. Sorry, got a little excited about backup power.
This is why we have no downtime due to no power, yes.
Here's an overview of our budget for the last three cycles. If you note in two thousand and twenty-three, in the net total, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-two, we have about a, almost a twenty percent increase in our budget from last year till this year. There's two main drivers for that. One is the CIP that was brought over to our operating budget, which was about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The second one was natural gas budgeting. So when we were in the budget cycle this time last year, natural gas was up around the eight, nine dollar decathems on the NYMEX for this winter. So we budgeted for that to happen. We didn't go all the way up that high, but we did, we did make a pretty big adjustment. And so natural gas is dropping, so I think we're gonna come out really on the plus side this year if that market holds, so.
One thing, one thing with natural gas prices, John and his team are always watching the market. I think you watch it on a daily basis, basically, is what you're looking at with regard to natural gas. And we do have the ability to do some pre-buying if need be to make sure that we are capturing the market when it is advantageous to us. Now, last year at this time, when we were looking at what that looked like, that was a very iffy slope because one day it was eight, nine dollars, the next day it was five, six dollars, the next day it was twenty-two dollars. Where is that right time to look at that? So they took opportunity to pre-buy some smaller quantities than maybe we would have to capture what some of that cost savings could be, but not put us in a position where we're locked in at a higher rate when it does start to trend down like we're seeing now. So they're always constantly analyzing those utilities and checking where it is going to be most advantageous for us to take advantage of that.
We get a weekly report on the market, on the futures market, natural gas storage, where the gas is coming from. I review that pretty in-depth weekly and I do occasionally hear if something happening in the market, I'll go pay attention to what's happening. So at this time last year, the natural gas underground storage was well below the five year average. There were geopolitical events that were happening, there was a lot of uncertainty in the market. Now, one of the main things I look at is storage. How much does the country have underground in natural gas? And we are now above our, we were, last year at this time, we were below our five year average as a nation, now we're above our five year average. So that's what's helping to bring the prices down. So staffing summary, we've been pretty, as far as technicians go, at six and a half for quite a few years. The half comes from the facilities maintenance lead. Only half of his time is on the tool, the rest of it is assigning work orders and other tasks that I have assigned to him. It still remains an industry average, one maintenance technician for every fifty thousand square feet of building and grounds. Our current ratio is about twice that. So we maintain above an industry average for the amount of square feet that our technicians have to take care of. And we do that through a lot of different tools, so efficiencies, overtime, some contractor help, those kind of things all play into that. Our management systems, Maintenance Connection is a backbone of our operation, that's where we manage our entire workload, track our hours, track our parts. We're now looking at using it for inventory management, we have a pilot program this year and we're looking to use it this year in a pilot program for project cost tracking in hopes of someday being able to get down to a total cost of ownership for the county for each facility. So it's just another step. It's in the module, we haven't used it, we're continue to grow into this software to accumulate that data so we can pull it out and make good decisions. Building security, vigilante security cameras, a hundred and forty cameras around campus, that does not include the jail. The jail has about another hundred cameras, which they manage on their own. We do support them, we'll replace the cameras, we'll help troubleshoot the problems, but they manage that whole database. This is amazing one, this whole building security is amazing. When I started here, ten years, there were nineteen cameras and it was a system that would, it really wasn't working very well for us at all. So my predecessor got us going in a different direction and this has grown to the point where now we have two servers, we have some rollover functions, we have certain cameras that are monitoring evidence and other kinds of things in our law enforcement that if one server goes down, we need to continue to make sure that that data is accurate and true. So that will automatically flip from the failed server over to the other server to make sure that handful of cameras stays active. Two hundred and eight card readers, once again, I think when I started here, we probably had twenty card readers. This is a good thing. When I first started here ten years ago, we used to have people in the facilities department come in early in the morning to unlock doors for staff. That's gone. That inefficiency is over. The rest system integration, so this happened about five years ago. We have eighty-three duress buttons around campus, we're constantly adding them, not a lot, I think we have most spaces covered now. So it's a neat system. When you push a duress button, dispatch automatically knows within a second and they automatically pulls up the cameras associated with the area around that button. So they, they're within two or three seconds, they have, within a second, they know you've got an issue. Within a couple seconds, they have a picture of you. They can see what's going on in the space, so they can respond appropriately.
And think of that versus how it used to be with the panic buttons. You'd push the panic button and the sheriff's office would call and say, did you push the panic button? And they didn't know if it was legit, not legit, whatever the case may be. Now you're pushing that duress button and they are seeing what's the situation that they have to respond to right then and there.
It's impressive, but it's, at the same time, it's a little sad that that's where our society is at. I think that's just my personal opinion, so. This is our vigilante video, just a snapshot of one of the one hundred and forty cameras, a couple of them here at the courthouse. You can see part of the parking lot, the entry on the one, looks like the east, no, that's the main entry down on the left, and then we have a fisheye camera looking down. So all kinds of different camera technologies out there that we utilize. This is our central plant, this is our building automation, we call it Tridium. Our building automation touches the infrastructure of all of our facilities for heating and cooling, electrical, mechanical. This is the boilers at the central plant, how they're operating. You can see down at the bottom, this is an example, on the bottom right, there's two pumps, there's a hot water pump, one and a hot water pump two. Those pumps are redundant, so they never run at the same time. They switch every Tuesday morning at nine o'clock. One runs a week, then the other one runs a week. In the background of this, I'm focusing on those pumps because it's a good example, if, if that pump goes to start and it won't start, the other pump won't shut off. Or if the other pump shuts off and has a failure, the building automation says, hold on, we're not pumping, why is pump one not running? I'm telling it to run, but it's not. I'm gonna wait sixty seconds and if it doesn't run, I'm gonna start pump two. So there's all these automated fixes in the background that lie in the logic of our building automation system that help us to make fixes at three o'clock in the morning so we're not running in here and we're not interrupting the operation at the jail or law enforcement center, so it's.
Well, it's quite seamless.
It's seamless, no one, no one ever knows how.
I used to get temperature complaints.
All the time.
At least fifty a year. Seriously, fifty a year. It's too hot, it's too cold, it's too hot, it's too cold. I never get those calls anymore.
So very involved and complex, but it does a great job. Work order system, we processed over thirty-eight hundred and twelve work requests in two thousand and twenty-two. Here's kind of just a breakdown of what they are. You can see heating and cooling is eight hundred and seventy. He just, Tim just made a statement that we don't have any heating and cooling complaints.
That's why.
Eight hundred and seventy is.
They don't make it to me.
No, that's our PM work, so this includes preventative maintenance. So because of all that work that we're in behind the scenes and taking care of our systems and equipment and responding appropriately, it's a big, it's a big effort, but it's seamless and invisible to the customer, so.
Highly reactive when Commissioner Franzen and Commissioner Hoag came on the board, highly reactive. What you're hearing today is highly proactive. It prevents a lot of problems.
And I think this chart is a really good example of all the different things that our facilities department is actually involved in. You've got everything from audio visual to doors and locks to electrical to heating and cooling and plumbing, safety, security, training, vehicles. You know, when we talk about facilities, we're not just talking about the four walls and the windows and doors that are involved in a particular building. It is all of these different aspects of our organization as well.
Those are our main categories. One thing that we've put an emphasis on, on the last three to four years is labor tracking within the department. And so we, we've set goals in our performance plans that we expect labor to be accounted for. And so that has developed to the point now where we're mature in how we're reporting our labor. The technicians all report their labor based on the task that they're doing when they close the work order out and the work that they completed. So we've been around that eighty percent mark, now we're up to that eighty-eight percent mark in two thousand and twenty-two. I've done research locally with HVAC, plumbing, electrical contractors, and what I hear is if you have eighty-five percent billable rate, so if eighty-five percent of your hours you can account for in the kind of service that we provide, you're doing really well. And so we're at that eighty-eight percent mark, which means that other than the breaks that they're taking and a few odds and ends of minutes here that aren't being recorded, we're accounting for all of our time. And so it's, it's really neat to see. So now we can start talking, having discussions about, do we have enough time?
They spend it on the right thing.
Are we spending it on the right things, exactly, so.
This is some of those data-driven decisions we talked about with the business intelligence information. John's doing some of that work with mining that data out of his Maintenance Connect system to give him that information to make those data-driven decisions. How much overtime do we need to have? Are we staffed at the right levels? Should we be putting more time towards these types of things? When we look at the work that they're doing, is it being done in the right areas? Are we focusing that on some of those correct areas as well?
That time logged in work orders is, is hours worked. So PTO, comp time, that's all out of the picture. This is just eighty-eight percent of hours that they worked, so. And overtime is in there and we, we're watching overtime pretty closely. We did work about sixteen hundred hours of overtime last year in the department. When I break that down by the week, it comes out to about four and a half hours per person per week, so it's not a huge number on the average. It does cost us a fairly significant amount of money to work that overtime. However, in today's market, it's financially more practical in most cases for us to absorb the overtime than to try to hire out the contracted service. Electricians are at a hundred and twenty-nine dollars an hour right now. HVAC technicians are a hundred and forty dollars an hour. We can pay quite a bit of overtime and get nowhere near that, so.
And then the analysis of if you get to a certain level, you might be better off with the full-time equivalent.
Right.
Yep.
But can you eliminate all of the overtime? No, you can't. Because it's not necessarily all sequential.
Right.
Sometimes it's piled on top. And so that analysis, but as long as you're looking at it and evaluating the degree to which we are approaching that milestone where it is better for us to add another FTE and reduce the overtime. There's a point at which that changes and as long as I know that you're monitoring that and actively looking at that, then I think the conclusion you're arriving at is absolutely the correct one.
A lot of the overtime these guys are working to deals with some of the seasonal aspects of what we're dealing with. You know, we've had a little bit of snow this year and they already have their plan, work plan for the week set out, here are the things that we need to accomplish. Mother Nature doesn't want to cooperate and dumps a whole bunch of snow on us, the overtime is gonna come and making sure that those sidewalks are clear, those parking lots are clear, those areas are clear for when our, again, internal customers and our customers who are visiting our buildings are coming here. I know last, was it, no, it wasn't last week, a couple of weeks ago when we had one of the storms, I don't know how many times I heard that broom going up and down the sidewalk in front of my window. You know, they are constantly keeping our facilities accessible and safe, making sure that we don't have that snow on the sidewalks is a big part of that.
There's, there's a challenge now that we're, we're seeing that we're starting to bump up to our full capacity. I did have requests about three weeks ago from HRA to do their sidewalks and all their facilities, snow removal, and I had to, I told them, timeout, I can't, I can't accommodate you right now, I don't have the capacity to do that. We'll take a look at it maybe coming into next fall, we'll revisit it and see. They weren't happy with their contractor, so they were reaching out to us and I said at this time, I would recommend staying with them or finding a different contract because we just, we just couldn't bite it off with the, with the labor and machinery that we have, so we're, we're pretty close to being maxed out. This is a work order system and preventative maintenance. As Tim talked about, many years ago, we were a reactive organization. This shows the total amount of work orders on the left there and how many of those are PMs. It kind of ebbs and flows a little bit, but in two thousand and twenty-two, really good numbers, thirty-nine percent of all of our work was preventative maintenance. So forty percent of what we do is to maintain our equipment, get the most life out of what we can, keep it reliable, keep it seamless when we have problems to, to our customers. And that was thirteen hundred and seventy-three and we completed ninety-two percent of our PMs on time, so those are, that's an impressive number, that's, that's something we've been striving to get to and, and we're, we're just about there, so. Here's another area that is a challenge for us a little bit right now, project management, capital improvement projects. This does not include remodeling or new construction, this is just the capital projects per se that if I put the remodeling numbers in here, it starts to make this chart go, get really weird. If, if we were remodeling something and all of a sudden that's one project at one million dollars, it makes this just get really strange, so I just pull that out for clarity.
And you don't have a way of amortizing, you know, you're gonna spend that million dollars, but it's for projects gonna be useful for fifteen or twenty years, so there's no way of, on this type of system to do that, so it's just gonna be an anomaly coming into the numbers.
We could do that. The way that it's being reported right now is just simply the dollars spent in the year that they are extended.
Yeah, right, right.
They're not, we're not amortizing any of that.
And you just have to be able to explain that.
Right.
That that's the anomaly, that we get a big project that's, that's why.
It's gonna make a hit on that particular year.
Yeah.
So as our infrastructure has aged, everybody thinks of, oh, our new buildings. Well, our new buildings are coming up on twenty years old. And so as our infrastructure, and a lot of what we have out there is a fifteen-year life to eighteen to twenty-year life is about it, so as our infrastructure has aged, you can see in two thousand and twenty, we had twenty-eight capital projects that creeped up to twenty, to thirty-two in two thousand and twenty-one, and the last two years have been at forty-seven. So our capital projects have increased by roughly fifty percent in the last three years, which is another discussion for that eighty-eight percent that we're doing, that overtime that we're working and that kind of thing, so this, this is, this is a big part of that. We decided, we had discussions over the last couple of years about unplanned projects, so projects that come to us in the year that are outside of the capital improvement process. So last year was the first year we tracked it, we decided, how are we gonna define that? What's, so we decided we were gonna define it after I talked to the crew, when does a work order start to be, feel like a project to you? When does, when do you start moving from reactive work to now you're managing what you've been asked as a project? So that was one of the feedbacks I got. The other one was kind of along capital lines and just number of labor hours. So we define it as five thousand dollars and or forty hours of labor and not part of the capital improvement plan is an unplanned project. Maybe that should be eighty hours, maybe it should be ten thousand, maybe it should be twenty-five hundred, but we decided we're gonna start somewhere and this is where we started, so.
So one of the things that all of the divisions have done is created these strategic plans, these long-range plans that we're looking, not just next year, we're looking three years, five years, yours is out.
Six.
Six years at this point in time, to make sure that we are planning those resources. Where can we look at not just the financial resources, but the labor resources that are going to be necessary for these things as well? That's what you're seeing in this slide with the capital projects, those were those planned projects that you approved as part of the CIP plan, these were the items that were listed there. Every year as they're developing these CIP plans, John and Jason and Nick are meeting with individual departments, meeting with senior managers, saying. with individual departments, meeting with senior managers, saying, what's on your radar for the next so many years? How are you, what are the things that we should be looking at into the future? When we are identifying what these planned projects are, the unplanned ones are after the budget is set, after the resources are allocated for the year, these are the things that crop up that need to be addressed in that given year as well. Could be something that breaks, could be something that is due to a natural disaster or whatever it might be. Also could be something because funds become available for a department to complete something or a need is met because of a project going in a different direction, whatever it might be. These are the additional things that on top of what was already planned, these have now come before the department to be addressed as well.
Is poor planning a contributing factor as well?
I think there's opportunity for us to improve planning in some areas.
Yes.
That's a yes.
That is what we need to guard against.
Yep.
Is that people are planning poorly and they're just not putting it down. And they need to be thoughtful when they visit with facilities about what's on the horizon. Don't be flippant. Prepare for the presentation, prepare for the conversation, right? We also struggle with, there is still a degree of poor planning that is contributing to this. We should ferret that out of our organization.
And this is part of why we are tracking this particular issue now is where are we seeing these unplanned projects coming from? How can we reduce the number of unplanned projects? Because we're planning for the year with the resources that we have available to do. If we are starting to add to that load after the resource plan has already been done, if it is a situation of poor planning, and there are times when John and his team have had to say, no, I'm sorry, we can't accommodate that. These are the 19 projects that they did accommodate in 2022 on top of what was already planned.
And there's always going to be something that breaks.
Always.
Something that doesn't, you didn't see coming and it comes. So this number should never be zero, but the poor planning component of it should be zero.
Correct. And that's why we're starting to track it so we do have some of that data as well.
Four of them were failures. The chiller failed last year. We talked about that and I requested money to fix that. We lost the water heater in central plant last year. That was $20,000 repair that took us quite a bit of time. So there were four of those failures that ended up being projects. And then the other 15 were fairly evenly spread across the organization for the most part. Quick update on the city of Brainerd. Their relationship remains solid as far as I know. Nobody's yelling at me. The discussions have been good. The feedback and the customer survey responses are all very positive, especially on a winter like this one, when they used to have to go out there and shovel their own snow before they went to their office. So they're very happy with us right now. It just kind of breaks down. You can see where our time's going over there. Once again, HVAC, electrical and grounds and, and safety are, are the four high drivers over there.
What's under the safety category?
The safety category is not safety as in there's safety problems. We took over, there was a lot of things that city of Brainerd needed to get up to speed on, which they hadn't. Elevator, monthly elevator testing, right? We got to go in, use the fireman's key, drive the elevator up and down, make sure it does right. That wasn't happening. They weren't inspecting their exit lightings to make sure they were, they weren't replacing batteries in their fire panels in a timely manner. So we brought that to them and they said, yes, please, please help us with that. So that's, that's what the safety is. It's maintaining that safety-related infrastructure.
Is that based on a contract or is that a time and material thing that you have with it?
It is based on a contract that we negotiate annually.
Okay. And we're okay with that contract at this time?
Yes.
They must be okay with it. They're still hiring us.
Yep. It's, it, the first couple of years, it was, it was, they were pleased with us, but it was, it was like this. We anticipated it was going to be here. Then they remodeled city hall, which basically we had nothing to do with that. So we were out of the facility, so the hours dropped way down. Then in 2022, 21, we started to see it come up. And in 2022 now, after three years and three and a half years in the cycle, we're, we're sailing along right where, where we should be. We're, they're happy with the service. We're happy with the labor that we're putting into it. So it took a couple of years to get there.
And we should say it's contract and materials. They pay for their materials and supplies outside of what the contract is. The contract is for the professional facility services that we are providing.
Correct.
Including John's time, including Joey's time, including Rachel's time and all the wrenching that's being done as well.
Right. And there's some vehicle allowance in there and those kinds of things. But yeah, the, each work order they put in, basically we have the authorization up to $1,500 to make the repair. So the technician can go there, he can spend up to $1,500 to make that needed repair. If it goes over $1,500, then they, then these come to me and we need to have a discussion with the city. So that, that's worked very well actually. So.
Deb, none of these numbers include parks and trails. That's all a separate.
Parks and trails are all separate.
Parks and trails are separate.
Correct.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't really have the capacity to take on parks and trails at this point. Yeah.
Just a question. What do you see for the future with, you know, the buildings like you were talking about? They're getting up in age. So there's things that normally, you know, like, like, you know, gaps and cracks to keep moisture from getting in, that type of normal maintenance. Do you see anything in the horizon that's going to, you know, change any of that at this time? I mean, you, I mean, is it just typical maintenance on an older building, just like an older home? There's things you're just going to have to continue to do. Have you, can you plan for those things when you don't know what they're going to be?
To some degree, yes, but not completely.
It just going to, it's going to pop up.
It's going to pop. It's going to show its head.
We're going to have the people there, we're going to fix it and we're going to fix it in a timely manner.
I, I can't tell you exactly when the tuck point's going to fail on the judicial center.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to say it's going to be around 40 to 50 years is going to be re-tuck pointed, but it might go 60 and I might be talking to you at 35 years. I don't know that.
And that's where our condition building assessment becomes important. We monitor the condition of each of the buildings.
And that gives us a little more of a time to put it, to plan again.
You do know tuck pointing will be necessary at some point in time. And oftentimes it's to see what comes off the building. That's when you're going to do tuck pointing. The roof is going to fail. And so there are predictable things that we can, that will fail and that we can plan for over the course of time. I would like it to be about 80 to 20, 80, 20, 80% planful, 20% not, because there will be failures. So we're driving it towards as much planning as we can and recognizing that there are unplanned things that will occur here that are, we're going to have to react to. But we want to be more proactive than reactive.
You know, in the last three years with such a change of, of how staffings work and who's, you know, what do you call it? Hybrid and stuff. How much underutilized space do we have in this, all the square footage we have in our buildings right now?
I don't have that number for you. I will tell you it's, it's pretty low.
Okay. I'm just wondering because there's a cost of that space. There's a cost of heating and cooling and.
We're, we're, we're looking right now at growing in, so second floor community is probably the prime example. That space is pretty much empty right now.
Right.
We are looking at what's it going to take because the county attorney is completely out of room. The community corrections people are out of room. They're starting to scatter to other facilities. We're turning conference rooms into offices over an attorney's office. So how could we flow some of that over to the second floor? So once that happens, we don't have a whole lot of space. You know, we have, we have about six tenants that, you know, if, if they were to vacate or go totally remote or go back to a state office or something, then the space would open up. But other than the second floor community services, there's not a lot of available unutilized space.
We're not busting at the seams, but we also don't have a racket ball court.
Right.
Right.
And because of the fact that we do the chart that shows with the, all that goes into the building automation systems, that second floor space, when it's not being used, it's not, the lights aren't on, we're not spending electricity, you know, that we can keep some of that zone cost down a little bit from that perspective.
Do we, is, is it all the buildings switched over to like LED lighting yet? I mean, is, is that?
I would say we're, we're 60% there. That's something that we bite off a chunk every year.
Okay.
And it's been an ongoing thing. Probably about the time we get done, we'll have to start over again.
Well, yeah.
But, but yes. And that, that makes sense. That's a, that's about a three-year payback on that.
Yeah, that's what I kind of figured.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
And one other thing I'll mention to you, because it's fun for me anyways. In our maintenance connection software, you talk about asking questions about our facilities and when are they going to fail and what kind of problems are we going to have? We have asset tracking for every facility in that software. So as part of generating a work order or preventative maintenance or ones generated by a customer, that asset has to be selected. And so the facility is selected and then air handlers are assets, transformers are assets, water heaters are assets. So we know the activity, we can report out the activity that's going on on any asset. So if, if we've done five work orders and spent $7,000 on a $20,000 water heater, it's time for us to go, hey.
We're done.
We're done. That's it. We're not putting any more money into this. So we, we can report that out and that's data that we've been putting in for almost 10 years now. And so that helps us make, it's those decisions, right? Those good data-driven, solid business decisions. When do I need to come ask for more resources or how much further can I push this before I ask?
One of the things with our, you didn't hear John talk about at all is cleaning. We don't do cleaning with our crew. We have a contract that handles the cleaning for all of our facilities, all of our buildings. We have, and while that contract is a significant chunk of the budget that comes out of the facilities department every year, it is the best use of the resources of what we are looking at. We did do a review of our cleaning contract at the end of 2019, 2018?
We did, we selected a new contractor in 2019.
In 2019. That contractor has been very responsive. We've, we've had good working relationships with them. Like any agency right now, they struggle with employment to make sure that they're keeping up their levels of staffing. If we were to take that job in-house, we would not be able to find and manage a crew of people to be able to do what needs to be done on the cleaning side of things as well. The team that we are working with, with our, with our staff that we have in the facilities department, these are highly trained, highly skilled technicians. They are, you saw the, some of the charts and some of the systems that they are running. They're working in technology, just like Jason and his team are working in technology on a day-to-day basis. A simple lock at the jail is, you have to go to school to learn how to manage and work those locks at the jail. So it is, I just want to make sure everybody recognizes the work that they are doing. This is highly skilled labor, that they are very effective in the fact that they are in that, 88% of their time being worked in the work order system. These guys are working every minute of their day that they can to deliver for our services that we have here at the organization. As Tim said, without hearing a lot of, it's too hot, it's too cold, I, I'm not comfortable. Everybody is able to get their work done and kudos to John and his team for keeping us all comfortable, safe and operating effectively.
Anything else?
What's the customer satisfaction scores for the cleaning crew?
Oh, the cleaning crew. We are up to 79%.
I think we're higher than that.
Is it 80 some percent?
I'll look it up. I'll let you know.
I think it's close to 90.
It used to be in the mid 60s.
Used to be in the 60s.
And it's been kind of trending in the upper, upper 80s.
I don't have that one handy on my phone.
Got much better scores than the last.
Yes. Significantly better scores than what we had from the last cleaning company.
Yep. Surveys have been very positive, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, John.
Nick?
You're going to take a tour behind the scenes, I think.
That's the best.
I'm still scheduled for, I'm still scheduled for that.
I'm anxiously awaiting your visit.
I know you are. And I'm, I'm getting all excited.
If you haven't seen the boilers, the chillers, that whole room, if you haven't seen that whole room, it is super cool.
Yep.
Good morning, ma'am chair, commissioners. I'm not sure if they saved us for last because we're the best or if Debbie's got stock in coffee and was hoping you guys need coffee the rest of the day to get through the day because typically we're the boring ones, so.
Wanted to see if you could pay attention this long.
That's the truth. Finance department, we consist of seven staff members. That includes myself. That has a lead that oversees elections and our accounts payable and our payroll portion, technician underneath that, elections person, and then I have three analysts that do a significant number of different things throughout the organization. Overall, we take care of payroll and accounting. That includes state compliance, federal compliance, benefit support, accounts payable. We do budget, which is obviously a very big portion of what we do each year. We take care of the investments and the cash management for the county, reporting and audits, financial statements and annual reporting. We deal with GASB updates, the Government Accounting Standards Board, which puts out a bunch of rules and regulations on how we have to report things, our financial statements. And they very much enjoy making changes. We just did a conference with CLA and they were talking about the race to get to 100 because their, GASB was really pushing to try and get to 100 new pronouncements so that we had a lot more work to do.
Why would that be a goal?
It's a joke. I don't know that it's actually their goal, but that's the joke that we're all making that their goal was to get well beyond that. And they're over 100 now. We're still working on GASB, I believe it's 84 right now this year. We have 97 to deal with or 96 to deal with next year and a number of other ones inside that too. We take care of systems and programs. Obviously all the ARPA cares, economic support that we've done over the last few years and then elections as well. Outside of my central finance team, there are 12 accounting and finance individuals scattered throughout the county. That includes four business managers and then accounting techs and analysts underneath that. Some fun, fun stats. The average number of payroll checks that the county processes in a given year, last year we did 509 per payroll. That's every two weeks. We're running 509 payroll checks out. And that includes reviewing all the time cards, making sure they comply with the contracts, putting all this together and pushing out those checks each individual week. For our payroll team, it is a mad week. They are working from Monday till Thursday trying to get payroll done and it is dedicated for four days of just working on payroll and then trying to throw accounts payable on top of that so we can push checks out every week. It's a mad rush for them. Out-of-pocket expenses, this includes things like mileage, reimbursement for expenses they have when they go on travel. We did 2,809 transactions in 2022. You can see that compared to 2020, it's up quite a bit, but we are back to in-person conferences, in-person travel. So that brings us back up to more of our normal range for out-of-pocket expenses. On AP transactions, these are all the payments that we make for either an invoice or to an individual that is requesting payment through community services. There are 6,743 payments made last year. You get that summary every single week of all the payments we're making, that's what we're talking about. Purchasing card transactions, we do have credit cards scattered throughout the county with staff to improve our procurement. There are 3,541 transactions in 2022. Again, you can see the trend has bent up. This is a lot of people that are using credit cards throughout the county and that just simplifies that procurement part. And as we do that, those go up. Amazon purchases are usually a big portion of that.
We have a decentralized procurement purchasing process in our organization. If you recall, many years ago, we had a centralized process where we had a purchasing department whose responsibility was to procure on contracts, often with purchase orders. whose responsibility was to procure on contracts, often with purchase orders. They were issuing purchase orders for a lot of things. That's not really how commerce is working these days. So much of it is, you can source your own information by finding what you need available through a state contract, through a vendor, through an online search. And oftentimes, what we're finding is, even though we are a governmental agency where your payment is basically guaranteed, there are less and less vendors who are willing to accept a purchase order for a payment. They want that immediate payment with a purchasing card, with that direct payment to them versus waiting for the check to pay the invoice or even a purchase order for after the fact. So the decentralization makes the most sense. Each department is responsible for procuring their own supplies, materials, and contracts based on policies that you have put in place for them to be able to do so.
It does add some challenge as far as training is concerned, because we do have to communicate with all of them to follow federal and state procurement guidelines. There are requirements when you hit certain dollar thresholds that they have to have certain types of bids or quotes that come into play. So it has expanded our responsibility of central finance to educate particularly our business managers and hope that they can cast it out further than that to make sure we're complying with that. Through ARPA, CARES, and the economic assistance grant wasn't so bad, our requirements to meet federal purchasing guidelines have gone up significantly. And it's something that we continue to struggle with just because there are so many different changes in guidelines as far as CARES or ARPA is concerned that throw some of that procurement out of whack. But we do have to continue to push that training out because we have so many people that are procuring now that before it was one or two people in central financing care of that. Now you have two, three hundred people that can procure. Settlement, this is the amount of money that we push through after we collect the taxes for the cities and townships. This is the amount of money we're pushing back out. There are three times in the year that we do settlement, but there are portions of that because there's an advance that occurs and then the actual final settlement that occurs in July. There's another advance in the fall and then final settlement in December, and then we do another settlement in January. In twenty twenty-two, we pushed out a hundred and thirty-four million, six hundred and thirty-three dollars to, or six hundred and thirty-three thousand to the townships and the cities.
And schools.
And school districts. And any special tax districts on top of that. For W-2s, these are the tax statements that go out to each individual staff member at the end of the year. We did six hundred and thirty-eight in twenty twenty-two. As turnover goes up, there's more and more W-2s that have to be issued because we are hiring these people back in, and we have thirty or forty people that left us in that year. Those compound and increase how many W-2s we're pushing out. Ten ninety-nines, these are for payments that we have to make to a vendor when we hit, I believe it's five hundred dollars, we have to send out a ten ninety-nine to a vendor, staying, this is how much we've spent with you for that year. In twenty-two, we did four hundred and twelve. We did have a little bit of an increase with some of the ARPA grants that we pushed out to push some of those ten ninety-nines out. Twenty twenty-two, you can see was much, or twenty twenty was much larger than the rest. That was our CARES portion where we had to push out a lot of ten ninety-nines. Budget, like I said earlier, is a very large part of what we do. We are just over a hundred million dollar organization, and every bit of that has to be budgeted and accounted for in our general ledger, in our budgeting system, and then communicated to all of you. The schedule that we follow for budgeting is long, and it feels like we go from yay, we're done, to oh dang, we're starting all over again for the next year. Like Debbie said in the beginning, we're talking about twenty twenty-two, we're working in twenty twenty-three, and we're already planning for twenty twenty-four. I've started meeting with senior managers to start developing that plan for twenty-four, but we actually do a full true kickoff in April. This is for our capital projects plan. We pull that forward first because it's a little more planful, it's a little more expected of what each year is going to be. They have the long-term plans in each of the departments for fleet, facilities, and IT that really help us guide that. It's just adapting to some of the changes that occur from one year to the next. In May, we start the operations and payroll portion. This takes us a few months to get through all that aspect, each department budgets. We meet with them, S and T meets throughout this timeframe to try and wrangle with how that's going to look and how that's presented to you. And then we come to you in August and do a lot of review, updates, changes that need to occur. And then September, we come with that preliminary levy. If there's any changes that have to occur after that, we work throughout the next few months before we get to the final levy in December. There are over five rounds in the budgeting process. This depends on each given year. If we're in a good year, it's about five rounds of touch points that we have with this. In other years, we've been up to ten, eleven passes through this to get that final budget pushed through. A fun number, we have over two thousand seven hundred and forty-one organ object combinations that are budgeted for across the entire organization.
Nick's idea of fun numbers, you know.
It's a fun number. The part that drives me nuts with this one is that number continues to grow year over year. We put a lot of effort in trying to control our general ledger, which is our account, accounting structure that we have, and I continue to see this grow, and I continue to put pressure to get staff to reduce how much we have to have here. Every time we add a new line, that's an opportunity for error. That's an opportunity for us to miss a budget line or another line that has four hundred dollars in it, and we're tracking all this information for one four hundred dollar purchase. So we try to minimize how much growth there is, but each one of those lines have to be budgeted in a given year. That's spread across six major funds with eight divisions or departments. Those are all buried within the general fund. That includes governance, admin, sheriff, land services, and then of course, we have highway, community services, solid waste and landfill that all get budgeted. We also take care of first and second assessment district. With highway and central finance, we manage those two and bring those forward to you as well. We manage quite a bit of money through our department. We do still have one CD out there through a company called Quickrate. That's a two hundred and forty-nine thousand. I believe that matures in, I think it was twenty twenty-five when that one matures. It's just a long-term investment that we purchased probably six, seven years ago now, and just finally getting to maturity. Everything else that has matured out of that, we have shifted to different vehicles. We do, a lot of our investing through Bremmer with two CDs sitting there, over six million dollars worth of CDs in Bremmer. The trust side, we have over forty-eight million in holding within investments there. A lot of these funds are restricted and committed funds that we can't utilize for other purposes. So landfill, solid waste, are funds that sit for dealing with remediation of a spill or an issue that happens in landfill. Those funds aren't able to be touched. We invest them. So that we get a return on that and help reduce levy by having interest income. You remember over the last couple of years that we saw that number decline. Our investment revenue really dropped. We're starting to see that come back up now, so positive things for us. On top of that, we have a money market savings account. This is kind of our liquid cash that we hold to spend throughout the year. Our average balance was thirty-two million in this account. This does have all the tax revenue that comes in for all the cities, township, school districts. All get buried into this account and then dispersed out of here. So that number gets really inflated because at some point, we're sitting at seventy, eighty million dollars in that account as we're waiting for disbursement back out to, to the local entities. We have a DDA account. This is a, the dispersments account, which is where we put all our money so that if somebody is taking a payment from us, they don't have access to our money market savings account. We only push enough money in here to address the amount of payables that we have. That's a whole management practice, just to make sure if somebody does hack our information or steal a checking information, checking account information off of a check, they can't get access to all of our funds. They only have that limited source. We did have a couple of years ago, an attempt to defraud through check fraud, but that was related to the canteen account over in jail. We had to do a whole shift in how that account was managed. We had to close and open a new one, address a lot of backend internal controls on that to eliminate that risk going forward. But it was an area we didn't look at very closely. It was a few thousand dollars and it's inmate money that just held there. Didn't quite expect somebody to go and try and duplicate a check and go and try and pull funds out of there. So Bremmer did a great job catching that, alerting us in advance, and then working with us to stop payment on that, make sure that the funds don't get lost, and then reworking those accounts. In our dispersments account, we moved over a one hundred and ninety-five million dollars through that dispersment account last year. That's between the accounts payable, that's between payroll, that's with all of the settlements that we do. It's a lot of money that flows through there. Then just kind of a breakdown of where the settlement falls within the year. That January settlement's usually a little over three million dollars. The July settlement's just over seventy-six million, and then that December settlement's just over fifty-four million.
The July settlement is the May fifteenth or the first payment deadline. That is that, the reason it's usually higher is a lot of people, if they do choose to pay their full year tax instead of paying it in the two installments, they're going to pay it at that May deadline versus in the fall. So you'll always see that July dispersment, that settlement is usually a little bit higher than what that final one in December is. And the January settlement is the reminder notice before your taxes go delinquent at the end of the year, where we usually do see several payments that come in between October and December.
We also do reporting and auditing management. I had to put the three little crowns on there just because people made fun that I should get a Burger King crowns for all of our staff, so we have three crowns, so I threw three crowns on here. We do the annual financial, comprehensive financial report, the popular annual financial report, which is a simplified version of that. It's usually four to eight pages long, just summarizing the hundred and sixty-some page ACFIR. Most people don't bother to read it. I'm sure all of you have sat on your bedside reading it because it is entertaining reading.
Fascinating.
Very fascinating.
Fascinating.
We create a budget book each year. That's a three hundred and fifteen page, summarizing our budget, CIP, some historical analysis, and then the highway department's transportation plan. We do the audit every single year. It's a long process. It's another one of those that it feels like it takes forever. We start meeting with our auditors in November and December. They come on site for the first time in January, spend two days here bothering us and pulling a lot of information. Then they come back for two weeks straight in May where they will go through everything. Especially this year, we have a lot of federal programs that we spent more money than the minimum or the max allowed for us to not have a single audit. So we get to go through, I think there's six this year we get to go through. We keep adding more funds that are federal and it complicates that whole process. We also do quarterly reporting, not just ARPA, but throughout all the departments, there's a number of different quarterly reports to the state and to the federal government that we are required to do. ARPA has been the big one for central finance because that is centralized with us.
What's the triple crown?
The triple crown is we got awarded by the GFOA, which is the Government Financial Officers Association, for the compliance and for the presentation of our ACFIR, our PAFR, and our budget book. And I believe that was twenty twenty-one's? I believe it was. It's hard to keep track because they're behind in so many pieces. I got an notice yesterday that twenty twenty-one's PAFR just moved into review, which I thought twenty twenty-one's was already done. So they're all over the board right now in their process.
How many other counties in Minnesota have a triple crown?
Ooh, I don't recall what that information was anymore.
There are three other counties. There are only four total counties in Minnesota that have the triple crown award that have received that designation. And there are only about three hundred total local government entities in the United States. Cities, towns, schools, counties. Out of sixty-seven thousand, I believe, is the number of local entities. There are only three hundred and eighteen who have received that triple crown award, and we are one of them. And that is due to the stellar work that Nick and his team are doing. They are preparing that three hundred and fifteen-page budget book completely in-house. They are preparing the hundred and sixty-five pages of the ACFIR completely in-house, and they are completing the fourteen pages or whatever it is of the PAFR completely in-house. They are doing all that work with those two or three analysts that are on our staff who are putting that information together. It is a huge accomplishment, and it is definitely something that, while maybe nobody wants to sit and read the three hundred and fifteen pages of the budget book, it is there, it is available, it is transparent in the work that we are doing with the finances for the organization, both on the front end and the reporting after the fact. So here, when we talk about the budget book telling you how we're going to spend those dollars, and the ACFIR and the PAFR showing you how we did spend those dollars. That transparency and that dedication to putting that information out there for the public to see is a huge thing, huge process.
Do you have software that pulls the PAFR from the ACFIR?
No. The, the ACFIR is actually built within a system that we work with CLA, our audit firm. They have a system that they utilize to review. We can build our ACFIR within that. That is linking everything from MUNIS over to this system, making sure that all flows through. And then we have to do a bunch of entries on that system separate from MUNIS to get our year-end financials. Once that's complete, we summarize and take the information from that system, move it over to Excel, and create our PAFR from there. Yeah. We're hopeful that the budgeting system that we implemented, it does have reporting capabilities that are supposed to be able to help us in development of the PAFR, so we can try and modify that a little bit and hopefully disconnect it a little bit from the ACFIR. But there are portions that we do for the annual financial report that will never see MUNIS ever. So there are, there's information in there that we have to pull out in order to complete the PAFR.
Well, talk to IT, see if they can't come up with something that just pulls it.
Right now, I have a, my version of a business intelligence analyst in my department that has been a wonderful thing to have. He's been able to develop a lot of reporting for us, a lot of connections for us that we didn't have prior. And he's doing this all as a part-time college, he's full-time college, part-time with us, doing all this work. I was hopeful I could retain him full-time, but he does not want to move up this way, and he's not very interested in remote. He's actually going to school down in the cities, family's down there. So I have to look at what my next option is going to be going forward. I'm hopeful that I can get somebody similar to him because there's so much data and so many connection points that we have. You'll see when we look at the programs that we manage that have to be maintained, and I'm hopeful that we can find somebody that can help us continue that and make those connections to get the ACFIR and the PAFR and all those pieces to talk together, to each other.
Totally sidetracked of that, but this employee that Nick is referencing came to us through a, an intern project. You know, we had hired him as a seasonal intern, and what we see is a lot of the return we're getting from developing those internships. Jason, how many in your team started as interns? Four of the thirteen staff in the IT department came to us as interns first, thought, hey, this isn't such a terrible place to work, and either stayed with us or went somewhere else and had a career for a while, and when an opening opened up here, came back to us because of the experience that they had. By being able to work with Jim part-time to be able to keep him on while he's finishing his college studies and be able to utilize those resources and those assets as well, that's a huge process. And, and it's really a good benefit for us and a great benefit for the students when they are learning these things that are giving them those skills that they're going to use in their employment. It also benefits us through that process as well. So when we talk about the internships, you're going to start seeing some of those coming through for this coming summer and year. Those are really advantageous on all sides.
It also is a benefit, or shows the benefit of our connectivity that we have now through teams. He's able to do this a hundred percent remote from his dorm room and work for us two days a week, doing all these tasks, connecting into our databases, working through those systems. And we maintain security through all this process, too, so that people aren't able to access it, but he is able to get in and do all the connections for us.
And attend your weekly staff.
He attends my weekly staff meeting, and I've put in place with any remote worker that I have, we touch base once a week, just individually, that individual and myself, just to kind of keep that personal relationship and keep everything there so that they feel like they're part of our team. They also come to that team meeting every single week to be a part of our team. So we've been very, or very dedicated to try and maintain that. I don't know if we'll have another remote worker or not, but it is something that has worked for us with two employees thus far.
Other thing, kudos to your staff for producing our annual comprehensive financial report. Most counties in greater Minnesota that are our size are smaller. The auditor produces it. You may have noted that Nick said that our CLA, our auditor, has software that not only will review an ACFIR, but that you can build an ACFIR. It's because they build the ACFIR for most of the counties that they audit. From a financial practices standpoint, the auditor producing your ACFIR and then auditing the ACFIR is not a great practice, and it is much better that the entity produces the ACFIR, the auditor audits the ACFIR. It's just a better financial practice. And so kudos to your staff for having the capacity to produce our own ACFIR. We've been doing that now for at least five?
We've been producing our own ACFIR for about ten years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gotta be at least ten years now. And that's just a testament to the staff that we've been able to hire over all these years. We bring in some very qualified staff into our senior analyst role, into our analyst roles that are able to put this together. It is a long, comprehensive, difficult, challenging process to put all this together. Cory starts on it in late December as we start getting ready for year-end close. We close out the books, and then she'll work on this all the way until June. That includes dealing with the auditors in that timeframe. That's putting this together, that's doing all the normal tasks on top of that. It is a long and difficult process to go through, but we get much more clarity out of our financial statements. We get much more control in understanding what those findings could potentially be that the auditors are going to come up with. We also saw from experience, and it's, it's not that the auditor does your financial statements because there has to be a segregation between your auditor and who's doing the statement, but you can have the same entity doing that. So you may have somebody from CLA putting it together and then your audit team reviewing it. We saw back in twenty nineteen with the twenty twenty, or twenty-eighteen financials, we had an outside organization come in and do our financial statements for us. We saw some of the challenges of having that. There's less control over that. There's less understanding what's going on. And then when findings do come up the next year from review, you don't have the ability to say, well, we did that. You sit and go, well, we didn't even put this together, so why is that finding impacting us? So we are very happy that it's in-house and not outside of here. That annual financial report is a hundred and sixty-five pages, and that includes narratives. That's all the financial reports. That's statistical, it's a lot of information that goes in there. In the last year and a half, we've been working on GASB eighty-seven. This relates to leases. Now, with all of our leases, we have to count them as capital assets. So we have to completely rework how we treat all these. We had to go out and work with our We had to go out and work with our vendors to value those assets, determine what their interest rates are, what portion of the payment, whether it has interest or not, we have to assume that there's an interest payment in there and we treat it basically like a loan now. It's been a long process. There was a delay that happened in there because of COVID. GASB gave us a little bit longer to work on this. But we, I'm happy that of where we are, we're ahead of many other counties, many other entities. I know C.D. Brainerd called a couple of months ago and they were just starting some of this process. We've been working on it for a year and a half to make sure we capture every lease that's out there so we don't end up with a finding. Now, with that said, could we end up with findings here? Based on the report that CLA gave us saying, these are all the things that you should have done in that process, it is possible that we may because we didn't follow everything that they had because they didn't have that plan until about a month ago. We've been putting all this together for over a year and a half now.
It is sadly not uncommon that we get told we're going to be audited for something, but don't get the instructions that the auditors are going to look at until about a month before the audit.
Long after all the work has been done.
Yeah, and so there ought to be some, here's the new GASB standard. Here's what we're going to go and audit and we're going to start to do that some length of time in the future. We don't get the notice and opportunity to change our practice to conform. And so it is not, it is sadly too common that I see this where we end up with an audit finding, not because we weren't willing or able or capable of doing what needed to be done, but because we didn't get adequate notice. And that bothers me, but I, that in two bits is going to get me a cup of coffee. I don't think we're going to be able to change that anytime soon.
Yeah, and there's. With, with that thing that they did moving it all, those leases into kind of a liability. I mean, some of the other organizations were involved in, I don't think we're going to be the only ones going to have a problem with it.
No.
I mean, it is, it is, it's, it's really even hard to understand it from why they did that myself.
Yeah. And you can look at the Financial Accounting Standards Board, which does the private sector world. They've done leases already as well. And there are multimillion dollar organizations with very large accounting and finance staff dedicated to doing financial statements that struggled with leases. It is a challenging concept and it's especially from a government standpoint, it's challenging to see the value that this brings. But it's a requirement, we have to follow it. Along with that, right behind this will be GASB 96, which is the exact same thing related to software as a service. So any software that we are paying an annual fee to have access to that software, we have to do the same process again for next year. But this time focused on that software component, which I think is going to actually be a little more challenging for us. We only ended up with a few items that qualified for 87. We reviewed over 40 different leases, only had a couple that actually qualified under the guidance. With this software-based IT, I can't even remember what the whole, so BETA stands for. But for that software, we have a lot of software that we use, that we don't host here, that we are paying an annual fee for to have access to it. We have to work with those vendors to figure out what is the value of that, what's the interest rate going to be? We have to calculate all that out.
Think about our finance system, our tax system, our Microsoft system, all of our applications that we are utilizing from that perspective. The level of work that's going to be involved in tracking all of those and gathering all of that information, like Nick said, and accounting for all of that.
It, it'll be another fun year.
Good.
I use the word fun a lot. It's just a.
We really need to work on this idea of fun.
It's a way to try and convince myself that this is a lot of fun.
We, we should remember that this GASB board is made up of accountants and people that have been elected or appointed to this.
Correct.
Who are just trying to think they're more important than, in creating new systems or reporting things that we don't know if it really has a value or not, but makes them feel good about what they're doing.
Well, and the whole intention of GASB is to try to provide transparency. They're trying to show where are your federal dollars, where are your state dollars, where are your county dollars being spent? That is what that intent is, but you're right, it seems like there's not a thought process sometimes that.
Not sure how this would reflect on the ACFA.
Right.
As an indication of the financial health of the organization when it's a lease for, let's say, a copier.
Right.
That ain't ours and when the lease is over, we got nothing. Same with software.
Same with software.
See how that adds to the information about the stability of the government organization.
Yep.
What they were attempting to do is take that asset and make it show up in all of the financial statements. So it's in the balance sheet, it's in the income statement, it's across the entire thing. Prior to this statement, the balance sheet wouldn't see this. It would be, and it, think of the city of Brainerd where they're leasing their police vehicles, they're leasing a lot of their assets. That was showing up as an expenditure. They were never recognizing that there's an actual asset that they are utilizing in that. So that was the intention behind it. I see less value in the government sector than in the private sector for that, but my opinion doesn't get me very far when it comes to.
Guys can have a lot of coffee between the two of you.
We'll have a lot of coffee.
They didn't call us.
No, they didn't ask.
From a systems and programs side, we also manage Munis, our accounting system, our ERP system, the Inova cashiering system. This is where everybody goes to make payments. We manage that whole process. Paymentis, which is our online payment portal, we manage the out-of-pocket expense reporting, which is Wells Fargo. We manage the purchasing card, our time card system. ProSystem FX engagement, that is our ACFA and our communication system back and forth between us and the auditors. We manage the wealth component, that investment component, and then we manage property insurance. Along with that, we support the benefits programs that we're doing for payroll, working with HR to do, monitor those components, cost those components, make sure we're getting our best value there. We work with them on all the payroll costing and everything else above and beyond that too. On the ARPA side, we've talked about this at the last Budget Committee meeting. We processed over 13.9 million payments between CARES, Economic Assistance, and ARPA. CARES was just over nine million, Minnesota Economic Assistance, just over 1.2 million. And then ARPA, so far we've spent 3.5. There is an additional seven mil, eight million that's got to go out yet. We do have the 4.9 million that we're going to utilize to offset some of our expenditures internally. So you'll see that number change as the year goes on. That's what we've done through the end of December. Along with that, we had to add a lot of additional tracking and reporting. This included inside Munis to be able to monitor and track where those funds are at. We had to build additional funds to keep it separate from everything else and then have to do our reporting to the feds. The state was much easier than the federal government. The federal government likes to change little things as we go. So every reporting period, every quarter that I go back into the system to do a report, they add new components that we have to find or get data on. And then you don't know that you need that until you say, I'm done with this program and all of a sudden they go, whoop, we need 20 more questions answered. We need this information. And then you go, well, we didn't collect that information. You can't close the program until you get that information. So there's been a lot of circling back with our partners in this to get further information, to meet the federal requirements, to do all this reporting. I think a lot of it comes down to, they need the information to be able to tell all the amazing things that the program has done. So they keep adding more things because they can say, well, this has done that, this has done that. It's just a way for them to report, puts all the burden on us. Not unusual when it comes fed to state to county. Elections, all of you are very well aware how the election went last year. We spent a lot of time answering questions related to elections, providing information. Debbie spent a ton of time with all of you, with constituents, talking about the elections process and what goes into that. And then of course, when it comes to election, the finance team and a large number of temporary staff conduct that process for us. We had 32,813 total votes in 2022. That's a 69.14% registered voter turnout with 61.74 of eligible voters turning out. I think that's a good number.
For a midterm.
For a midterm. In that, 24,941 were at the polling place. Three, 7,872 were absentee mail-in votes. Those absentee mail-in votes are the ones that we process up here. That is a small set of staff that manage that process and go through each one of those ballots, open them up, run them through the system to get counted. This year we did that in front of watchers that were able to sit and watch us do that process. We got good comments from some of those people that were leaving, just amazed at how that process works, how efficient, how quick we are with that process. We are very open and transparent with it. We are, and honestly, our staff is up there because we want to be done. Let's go as fast as we can, we have another job to do, we need to come down and do finance, we need to do budget, we need to do accounting. We don't want to be up there any longer, we have to, so we're very efficient in that process going forward. We did pull in some staff from other departments to come in and help us with that. So we had two tables of individuals going through the process and doing that.
People who think numbers are fun make good ballot counters, I mean, make good ballot processors. If they think numbers are fun because they make sure that those things balance out and everything is good.
If we got 20 ballots in, there better be 20 sitting there, there better be 20 counted and everything should add up. If it doesn't, we have a problem and we struggle. If it doesn't add up, we are panicking, going, what the heck happened and figuring out why that happened. Anything else on elections?
I think we talked them to death in 2022.
Yeah.
I do have a quick question, Debbie. You know, they moved the presidential primary that cost some extra money and it took a long time for the money that came from the feds to get out.
From the state.
Or from the state?
Yep.
Why does that not come from the feds? It's a federal race.
Because while it's a federal race, every state is responsible for the laws and the processes that their individual state takes. So not every state has a presidential primary. If you know, we had, used to have just the caucus system in Minnesota. And when they changed that to go to the presidential primary, that was because the state legislature chose to move to a state presidential primary. So even though it's a federal office, it's a state election administered by the counties, which is why, and in all honesty, it's a political party process that is administered by the counties on behalf of those political parties, which is why the state was reimbursing to make the counties whole, that there should not be county resources that went into administering that political party exercise. We have nothing to do with the caucus process where it used to be a straw poll at the caucuses. That was all done completely at the party level. When they moved to the state presidential primary, that brought our resources into play. The intent, as Senator Kiff Meyer said numerous times, was that there should not be any county costs associated with that process. Unfortunately, there was, the way that the law was written, none of my time was reimbursable, none of Nick's staff's time was reimbursable. None of our original, of our permanent full-time staff could have our costs reimbursed for that. If we hired temporary staff or if we had overtime, those costs could be reimbursed, but not our staff actual time. So we are back in the legislature this year asking for making some changes to that process, into that language, to make sure that all of our costs are recouped from that perspective. Because there were, I would say, I think I figured it was around $5,000 to $8,000 that we were not able to get reimbursed for on our end.
Good to hear. I think they should change that.
I agree.
There shouldn't be a cost and, you know, and you're, you're doing double duty while you're trying to do your normal job, plus do the elections and that.
Right.
The pressure on the staff is unbelievable.
And one of the things is a lot of our election staff, with the exception of a couple of people, are salaried employees. So there was no overtime that we could point to to say that that was the cost that was associated with the election. We could track the number of hours that they spent at that, but we weren't able to get reimbursed for that, which is why we're asking the legislature to revisit that.
If all those staff had to go to EAP, would we be able to recover our costs?
I don't know, I really don't know that we would.
Just a thought.
Any questions for Nick?
I have one. It goes way back when you were talking about we have a lot of dedicated funds or committed funds that are in reserve. And there is, and they're invested in where we're receiving a, a gain or, you know, proceed from that as our, as good stewards of money, we would. How is that, how is that allocated out of those? When, when you have a dedicated, if you have it in a dedicated fund for, let's say it's a building project and we've got funds dedicated, does the proceeds of that go back into that building fund or does it go to general fund? Or how do you allocate those proceeds across?
The ones.
Especially commingled funds because some of those are commingled.
The ones that are restricted are dedicated based on decisions that are made here at the board table. Those go back into the general fund and are spread throughout that area. Anything that is restricted as far as a state or a federal requirement, the, a lot of those funds either have to go right back into that existing fund and it just gets reinvested and continues to build up in there, or it has to be dedicated to a forestry type program or something like that. So those funds that we do have access to, if they are dedicated forestry, they get pulled out and moved over to land services for them to utilize for those purposes.
So there's a, there's a process.
Yep.
Okay.
It does vary, I think, the, isn't the long-term trust interest going back into general fund?
On the landfill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, some of them.
There are some variations in that practice and I think that one is guided by statute if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Okay.
So most of the time it's up to us and then we tend to put the resources back into the same fund.
Right, that was just, just, you know, because there's some large amounts there and, you know, to say it all comes into general, but there should be a process, there should be a policy in place for that. And if there is, then that's just something I didn't know yet.
I just want to go back to two questions that were asked earlier. The cleaning satisfaction score is 96% at the end of 2022. So up from the mid-sixties that we were in previously to 96% satisfaction rate for our cleaning crew. And I mentioned the IT department's satisfaction rating of 99.98%. The overall admin services, all of our divisions had a satisfaction rating of 99.42% for 2022. When we're talking about internal clients as our customers, I just keep touting that, that these are the folks we're serving, the people who know the ins and outs of what our organization is and they know the work that is being done. And their expectations are pretty high on the services that are being provided to them. So the fact that our, our group was able to end the year with a 99.42% satisfaction rating speaks highly to the excellent quality commitment to customer service that each and every one of the team members has. And I want to thank them all for their contributions over 2022 and into 23, now that we're already at the end of the first quarter here almost. Any other questions for any of us?
Great report and it's, you know, you take it for granted, don't you? You don't think about it every day and these things are going on in the background and it, it just is happening. And if it didn't happen, oh my God, would we be talking about.
We would know.
And so the pleasantly uneventful is what good planning gets us. And I prefer pleasantly uneventful. So, great job.
One of the things you're going to see from us as we move into 2023 is the strategic plans that they've all put in place. And we've talked before about we use three principles when we're looking at our strategic plans. We're looking at, I call them the three Rs. We look at what's the risk? If we do or don't do this, what's the risk to our organization? We look at the relevance, so what? Why should we do this? What's important for this? Who's going to benefit from this particular area? And we look at the readiness, how ready are we to advance this initiative? Is it something that we're going to need three years of planning, two years of planning, 10 years of planning? How ready is it, are we as an organization to tackle this? So as you start seeing these plans coming before you, those are the factors that these guys have been looking at as they try to keep that all coming into play. Risk, relevance, readiness. And it really is interesting how those things change. When we talk about COVID throwing a little wrench into our IT strategic plan, teams was one of our goals, but it was certainly not one of our higher goals because we weren't ready for it when we first started looking at it in 2017, 2018, 2019. We got really ready for it really, really fast in 2020. So by having all of these as our kind of guiding principles as we move forward, you're going to start seeing some of that come before you this year.
As the risk rose, the readiness did too.
Exactly.
Is that a hoolism?
No, I don't know. I got lots, so.
Another hoolism.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that's all we have, I believe, for today. Happy to answer questions related to county government, if you have any.
I do, I was wondering if we could have a further discussion about yesterday's personnel meeting in the hiring process for HR Director. And is that, we're okay to discuss that?
Yeah, you're in open session, so.
At, at the end, at the end of that conversation, there was a suggestion to just have our administrator do the hiring of this individual. I just wanted to throw that out there as, as to see what other commissioners felt. I think there were five different suggestions on how we go about that process and it, it just got kind of ugly. just got kind of ugly. So I just, I know I have confidence in our administrator to, to just take that responsibility on and hire a director. I guess I'll leave it at that to see if, what the others think about.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That was, that was my suggestion at, if you remember, yesterday's Personnel Committee meeting, and so if the rest of the board, or if a majority of the board agrees to that, I, I would support that. I, I think Tim, our county administrator, knows the direction that the county board wants to go, and I, I have confidence that Tim would hire the right person so that when it comes to negotiating contracts and doing the county business, that that person would be carrying out the wishes of the, the entire county board. So just, it's up to the rest, I, I think Doug and I are on board with that. So I would support that process, but if the majority of the board doesn't support that, I guess we can go with the process that we were going to use and have all five county commissioners interview the candidates. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might, you know, I have given this a lot of thought in the last 24 hours, and I'm also in support of relinquishing that responsibility to the administrator. I also think that he would make probably the, the best decision possible for the organization, so I, I support the position of the other two commissioners at this point.
So it doesn't matter what we want, John?
I guess my turn. You know, I'll have to default to me being new at this, never being involved in this high level of hiring of the, of the county, and I don't know what the normal process is. I have to pretty much go by the will of the people who have done it before. I mean, I like the idea of, of being able to see them all, but I don't know the ins and outs of that program, just because of my lack of experience. So I, I will go by pretty much the will of the council, or the will of the board. That's it.
You're hiring.
I have direction.
Good, thank you.
Madam Chair, any other questions? We're happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I have none. Anyone else?
Good to go.
You may declare us adjourned.
Thanks, Paul. I just have to learn how to sign out of this now that I'm on the...